Good evening, everyone. The time is seven o'clock and I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The next item on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. I have no changes, so I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. The next item is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on February 21st, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those meetings?
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any errors, changes, omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, great. Under Communications and Correspondence, I don't have anything this evening. I actually had a letter from a first grader here that I received today that I did want to read into the record. They wanted a, she wanted a record store at the Brainer Place Development. So I'll make sure to bring that next time, but she was into records, so I do apologize.
I'm just excited to hear the young kids know what a record is.
So we'll move on. The next item is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Just state your name and address.
Dave Murphy, 40 Carousel Drive. And I don't know if there's going to be questions, so I wanted to throw this out for Dan before his presentation. If you could give us an update on expectations of number of kids in the project that he's doing. I know we got about three years ago, got an old number. Maybe that's been updated, plus now there's a proposal for additional units. So we really want to kind of understand what you've experienced with some of your other facilities with as far as numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else would like to comment?
There's going to be another opportunity afterwards.
Yes, yes. So you can comment. You're welcome to comment both, but. Okay, I'll take that. No one else in the audience? Okay. Is there anyone online that wishes to comment? All right. So we will move on to item seven on tonight's agenda, which is the monthly budget report. Our finance director, Tom Robinson, is with us this evening. You all received our current monthly budget report, so Tom will come up and go over that with us all.
Handled out the monthly revenue and expense reports earlier today, so you have that on page. One, prior year taxes. They're coming, have come in strong, or continue to come in strong. We do have an ongoing tax sale population out there. On May 1st, 10:00 a.m., there'll be a tax sale. Currently, there's seven properties listed on that. There has been other companies that have paid on some personal property taxes that were older, that have resulted in some positive prior year collections as well, as well as with interest in liens. And that's a similar relationship of why those are higher than expected. And oh, 312, conveyance tax. It was a strong month for conveyance tax, which is good. They continue to stay within the range where we want it to be. Police private duty, oh, 3224. We have positive collections there. We also have around 26,000 that haven't been collected yet and 6,300 that's just in transit to being in this number. So that's a, you know, will be exceeding the budget revenue number, which is good as we have a, when we go to the expenses, we're getting close to exceeding the expense Page two, investment income. As we stated before, investment income stays strong. The, one of the budget transfers that we had posted, has not posted yet, so when we do the, hopefully next month, they'll be able to adopt that, the current prior budget. And only can I post entries after I adopt the budget that's in here. Well, it's an accounting issue. So we'll work on that. On the expenses, page four, technology. We're going to have to see how we come out with the computer network maintenance. That's our third-party vendor. We've had some transition in the technology department. So right now, we're short-staffed. We have openings for the Assistant Technology Coordinator, but you know, it takes time to fill those and at times of those, we generally have to lean on our third-party consultants. So we'll have to keep an eye on that number, but it's, that will likely exceed the budget area. Hopefully, we'll be able to offset against some of the payroll that we don't pay because the person's not there. Next department on the same page would be fire. Spoke with the chief today and training is just, you know, it seems like there's quite a bit more training going on this year. The parties to be, were interested in the training and are getting their certifications that they require and need. So that's a positive. So we'll likely have some overage in that account, so we'll have to monitor that, but those are, those are positive things that when, when the fire department has training and, and so we will keep, keep probably allowing charges on there as the chief sees required and fit. 3100, service contracts. That's a, there's multiple, there's multiple types of contracts in there. Some are communication, many of them are HVAC, some are for weather. So the HVAC is really what's driving the cost of going up. There has been, at this point, some of the HVAC issues that go into the fire department will be covered by the building maintenance department as we try not to overburden the fire department's service contract line as when we get to an excessive amount, and so there's been a few items that have been excessive. Conference meetings and dues, that's, should have continued to watch that number. That's for various dues and meetings. There's been change in personnel as well as when they have joint staff meetings and joint meetings, sometimes they have to cover the costs of some of the foods and topics at those meetings, which goes into that line item. Next page, page five, we're talking about police department. As we talked about the police private duty, there's about 4300 left in that expense line. And kind of similar to what we were saying, we're going over in the revenue, so it likely will over into the expense. So we'll keep watching that. This will probably require a supplemental appropriation of revenue and expense as it generally does, so we'll keep watching that, but expect that to go over. Licensing and software, they're kind of within their, the budget there. If there's any additional types of licensing software that is required, there could be a jump over the amount that's there. Conference meetings and dues, that's also is like their training line item. So we had spoken about that there were some expensive trainings that had taken place and then now there's been quite a few transition of personnel within the department and therefore they have specific requirements to be trained after they, they switch their, switch their leadership roles. So we do have multiple people that are getting trained in those areas, so that one is already, within the encumbrance, is already over the budget line item. Page eight, the grounds maintenance department, grounds maintenance, equipment rental. There has been a few machines in this, in the equipment supplies and in rental. The Toro that we know is aged, then we're trying to put in for replacement in the fiscal year 25 budget to keep it operational through the budget process and the acquisition. There was around, there was quite a large required repair cost on that as well as a supply. Some parts were supplies that were going to go on the piece of equipment and other parts were just purely repair costs. So you're, you're seeing the, some items there where we're in the negative with the encumbrance and we're, on both lines, we're in the negative in the encumbrance. Page eight, going down to building maintenance. We talked about this last time, that overtime is over budget at this point. And we had some HVAC issues at Fire Company Three. We have some fire alarm issues at Company Two. We had many rainstorms that resulted in water infiltration that needed to be cleaned up. And then we had some carpet projects that required the building maintenance staff to come in and out to open and close doors and kind of keep the building safe. So hopefully, warmer weather will come in and we won't have as many rainstorms and we can hopefully mitigate that, that overtime budget throughout the year. Oh, 37, this is why we're bringing up that equipment repair is, in the service contracts, there's some of those items that, like we said, where the HVAC is coming in with higher amounts, water heaters and things of that nature that are coming in often on the fire departments. And also, we had a generator at the police, you know, the police, this, this building here. This generator required about a $2,500 repair. And then once that repair was required, there was a rebuild on, on an engine, on the, on that that needed to be done. It's going to result in about a $4,500. So I know that the Director of Public Works is looking into the future capital acquisitions, but you know, for the short term, we need to make these repairs to get the generator back operational. So we're seeing some of those expenses and that's in the overtime in the equipment repair line item, so we'll keep watching those. On page nine, the Inland Wetlands Commission, the Board Clerk is already over budget, or is at 55 cents, so likely will be over budget. And the enforcement officer still has a remainder of the year to get through, only has about $500 to do that. That likely will not be enough in that area based on the activity that's been going on in that department. Page 11, Municipal Agent of the Elderly. This is the van drivers. Should be around 33% left in this budget and there's about 22% left in the van stipends. This is one of those areas, try to mitigate and make decisions on how much they can over expand or provide rise that are required for the respective parties. So they will keep doing that throughout the remainder of the year. Page 12. We spoke about this last time. This is longevity and term benefits. Longevity, there was some negotiated increases in that as well as retirements that occurred that resulted in additional required payment on the longevity payment before they retired. Termination payment fees are for the termination benefits. We had budgeted for two large retirements and there were a few others on top of those two large retirements, so therefore resulting in a amount over what we had budgeted. So what I'd like to do is just give you an oversight of some of the areas that are over, that are, that are going over. There are many other areas that are to the positive, so we just want to keep you in, keep you in the know of the areas that are going over. So, do you have any questions for me?
No.
All right, well, thank you all.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. All right. We're going to see Tom very soon because budget season is here, so we'll be seeing Tom next Wednesday.
The true March Madness.
That is the true March Madness. So we will move on to item eight on tonight's agenda, which is an update on EV charging stations. And Andy Bauer is here this evening to give this board an update. Andy's been working, myself, our Public Works Director, we've been working and looking at some potential locations for possible EV charging.
All right, thank you, Ryan. Am I being picked up okay on that voice? Tom was speaking, he's got a very soothing voice, but we couldn't hear him, so. Come through okay?
Yes.
All right, good. Okay. So thanks. So yeah, this is, the update as we are so far, but I just want to make clear that we are, we're going back and forth with Earthlight, our, our partner in this, and subject to change without notice, shall we say. All right. So first, just kind of review the big picture of why would we add EVs to a municipal fleet? Why would we add chargers? So when you do this, you clean up your air quality. You reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I was just driving over, I heard a report that, you know, at a dog sled contest in Michigan, the, the UP, I guess they call it, the Upper Peninsula, was canceled for the first time ever because no snow. So it's something that we have to deal with. Also, more EVs on the road, that's downward pressure on gas prices. If you imagine that half the EVs in Connecticut, or half the cars in Connecticut were EVs, imagine what that does for supply and demand. But in any event, I'll move on. So purchase price for EVs are roughly equivalent and the individual rebate that any one of us here would be able to take on our taxes, should we purchase an EV, that applies to towns buying EVs as well. Just found that out today. Other funding exists, not guaranteed. There are limited funds, they're competitive, but they're also out there for towns to purchase EVs. And further discussion is merited on this, but maintenance costs tend to favor EVs. Operating costs tend to favor EVs. So those are things that I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to look at, not tonight, but at a future date. Second, for EV chargers, okay, remember, EV chargers become, they make your destinations more attractive to people who drive EVs. If there's a charger, you know, they're more likely to go there. Municipal fleet charging, you essentially become, you know, your own fuel source, all right? So if you have EVs and you're charging them, as you know, we've, we are starting to ramp up solar in town. Solar brings costs down, okay? You got to pay for the extra juice for EVs, but again, I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to look closely at that. Newtown is really diving into EVs, as is Middletown. And Westport, Westport, I guess, has one police car already and they're looking to pick up another one, another electric vehicle. My tech crew, oh, great, got that up. Do you guys have this? Okay, great. And for folks in the audience, referring to what's on the screen, are you able to zoom in at all with that? I know it's a, it's a, it's probably not that possible. Tell you what, if we could zoom in on where it says site, that would be the left-hand side and then I'll just move left to right. So the site, we've, we've looked at a number of sites in town and this is not an ironclad list to date. These are just the sites which appear to be the most promising. So we looked at installing four spots. When it says ports, think chargers, think you could have four, four cars at once, four EVs charging. So Firehouse Number One, the Brownstone Park Lot, which is at the end of Middlestone Ave. Sean?
No.
Okay, sorry. And there's, it's labeled the Pavilion Lot. It's the lot right outside by the arch, the pavilion that's covering the arch. So you'll notice that the Pavilion Lot towards the bottom has two summaries, one for two ports, one for four. Charging KW, if you just want to take a pen or a pencil and mark this up, that would be a level two charger. Those are the ones that get you around 20 miles of range per hour of charging, okay? They're not the fast chargers, those are, those cost an arm and a leg, but they're not level one, level two. So cable management, networking, I'm going to, if, tech, if we could slide over to the right-hand side of the document where we have the costs. There we go. Thank you. So gross cost is the, you know, like it indicates, that's what it would cost just to do it out of our own funds. The utility rebate for Firehouse One and Brownstone, the Brownstone Lot is $40,000. And remember, you get, if you look down towards the bottom, it's $20,000 for the, for the Pavilion Lot here. And the reason why it's doubled is because it's, it's an environmental justice district? I think I have that right? Okay? So you get, you, that doubles when you're in that district. And that district is essentially from the bridge to the northwest side all the way to Strong Zav. To be honest, I don't really know how exactly that area qualifies to be an EJC or a district. And I've, we've put the question out there as to like, why is that a district and how long does it last? What are the qualifications? Because whatever, how that's determined may determine how the board chooses to go ahead. If it's only in play until 2025, you know, we're, anyway, that is, that is my homework to do to find out more about how it's determined and when it might, you know, is it going to be there for 10 years, whatever. So the last, the second last column on the right, paid by town. So you can see they're, they're roughly the same except for the bottom, which has a, you know, a jump in price there. And that, I believe, is because the Pavilion Lot, the arch, is, is not in the EJC. And then last is the price per port. So once again, these locations are not set in stone. The cost, we are still investigating with Stefan Hartman of Earthlight. The town might be able to do some work. I think I mentioned that the last time that I spoke. That brings the price town, brings the price down. If there are things that Earthlight finds on the site, that may bring the price up, but we are, we're still kind of investigating that. Stefan is going to get us some info in the next few days. When I have them, you'll have them. All right. So I'm going to pause and take any questions or comments.
Questions for Andy?
Andy, how long does a project like this take from a yes to a car's been able to charge there?
Believe that, so you got some permitting involved, you got some, Earthlight has to go through Eversource and do this, that, and the other thing. I believe, Ryan, correct me if you, if you remember, I thought Stefan said like eight or nine months.
I think that's about right.
Yeah.
So I'll just add, so I asked, Andy and I had a, had a meeting with Stefan from Earthlight on what, Monday of this week, I believe.
Yeah.
And so we went over the numbers here that you see in front of us and Andy asked, you know, when a good time to come, you know, to the Board of Selectmen would be. I suggested that he come tonight to talk about pricing. So if you, you know, it is budget season, you'll notice, I presented my, my budget for the year. I did not include EV charging in the capital plan for the year. If that is something that this board wants to consider this year though, I mean, now's the time to talk about it. So that's why I thought now would be a good time for Andy to come. You know, looking at the location, so you know, I think long-term, you know, obviously we're moving towards EV fleets throughout the country, you know, and that's, seems to be the direction that we're taking. I don't know if the, if this board's ready for, for that or, you know, or are we looking to maybe get a few ports set up, you know? I know the location of our Middlesex Avenue Lot was something that caught my attention because of the recent proposal for that Nordic spa in the area where the developers of that property, of that project have indicated that they would like to lease that Middlesex Avenue Lot from the town. And so I was thinking that, boy, having some EV chargers there could potentially be a revenue generator for the town. So that was one of my thoughts as far as this goes. But I don't know, it's, you know, I thought now would be a good time to talk about it and see, you know, if you guys want to pursue this further or what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of start off. I think, I think it's a good idea to consider right now. I mean, things are shifting that way. You know, the costs are probably going to go down if more and more towns are doing it and as the program gets bigger. But there are a lot of first adopters and secondary adopters out there right now with cars in town right now that I know. And the cost has become comparable, so I think the timing's certainly right to talk about it and see what we can do. Maybe, maybe two is good, maybe four is good, maybe one is good to start, but certainly I think getting started would be a good thing. I'd be in favor of that, as long as the numbers make sense.
Mike, you, you probably know what my response would be, but yes. So, and then I would, I would just encourage you to, because Ralph and I were talking about this earlier, this is, this is not boom, every vehicle in Portland goes away and is replaced with an EV.
Of course.
You are adding an EV. If you need to replace a vehicle this year, I would strongly recommend you replacing one EV, you know, or 2024, 2025. And then see how the chargers operate. Also, you know, Middletown has got, I think, five Ford Focus EVs and Newtown and Westport, you know? So I would encourage you to, I mean, you, you know what I'm going to say, but contact these towns and see, you know, are there issues, you know? Are there benefits? Do the benefits outweigh the issues? So that would be my suggestion.
Sean?
The one you're recommending at Company One, I don't really think, you're looking at putting that between the Firehouse and the Ball Field or the Fields that, very correct.
The parking spaces, yeah.
I don't think that's a good place for it because if we have a call there, we've run into this with problems with people that go to sports there.
Right.
We have to put cones up because when we come in, they're taking up spots and we have nowhere to park.
Right.
So that's just something I think you should, I mean, in theory, it looks like it would be a great spot to have it because it's close to
Right.
Main Street and the other things, but in reality, I don't think it's really
No, and I'm glad you brought that up. And just, our mind sight in looking at this is, you know, because it's a municipal effort, if you will, where can we put them? We can put them on municipal properties, all right? And Firehouse One, obviously being that. Being in an EJC, double the incentive, that caught our eye too. So if there are, if there are reasons, you know, that's a, I mean, that is a reason, right? So that all goes into the mix, the mix of our decision-making process. I would also say that, you know, looking down the line, should Portland add EVs, the Town Hall is a likely spot to put an EV charger. The Town Garage, you know, the Portland Route 17, the splash pad, the, the park there, those are all logical places to consider an EV, and I'm choosing my words carefully. You would consider to put an EV there, an EV charger there, and if it works, you go for it. And if it's got all sorts of headaches.
And just, I believe Stefan, when looking at these proposals and looking at where to potentially place EVs, I think he was looking at locations where there'd be the least amount of trenching and the easiest installation, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And to take that a little step further, when Ryan O'Halpin and I walked around with Stefan, we, you know, we started at the library, Senior Center, police station, we went across to the Milloli Parking Lot across the street and we were basically went across to the Malili Parking Lot across the street, and we were basically, all right, so this guy's got like 90 minutes, you know, where can we get to? And we went to every single town facility that we could get to within that timeframe. So just to be, just to be clear, it's like we were saying, Stephen, how about this? How about that? Not as, the, the suggestions weren't really coming from him, they were coming from us. So, but it's, you know, that's, one of the reasons why I like to present to you guys where we're at is, you know, Sean, just we could hear exactly what you said.
Just my two cents, I, when, what Sean said was exactly what I was thinking because I know that lot is small and when, when there's a call, it fills up quickly.
Yeah.
But, and I, I recognize that the Pavilion Lot isn't an environmental district, but it would seem to me that might be the more logical first location because you are adjacent to a few town offices. So if some of the offices housed here decide to purchase an EV, you're in walking distance.
Yeah.
But people going to Malili's for lunch, or going to the chiropractors, or anything on Main Street, being that you've got a level two charger and it takes a little time, that I would think would be a really good location. The downside is you don't get the reimbursement, utility reimbursement as much, but it would seem to me that might be a more reasonable location that would benefit town and benefit town business.
Yeah.
Andy, do you want to talk about how with the difference between the two charger ports and the four charger ports, and how the municipal municipalities can take ownership of the fours, but not the twos?
So if you, in order to qualify for the rebate, you have to have, you have to make your chargers open to the public, all right? So they got to be accessible. If you go with the, with, if a municipality decides to have their chargers for what we call fleet, like our fleet of vehicles, all right, then they don't have to do that. So you could put four charging ports, you could still get the incentive, but you don't have to make them available to the public. They could be put at the Town Garage, for example. Okay? And then you got four ports, you still take it, you still get the incentive. Ryan, that was, that's what you wanted me to cover?
Well, I thought that what Stephen was saying was that with four ports, you could turn them over to, to fleet, to the only fleet. Was that, was that not correct?
I think that was, that was what he said, but I'm making a note to myself.
And I thought you couldn't do that with two ports. That's, but, and, you know, Stephen did say that he would attend a meeting. He could attend our, our next regular meeting
Right.
On the 20th, if, if you guys wanted, you know. So, so this is something that I think, you know, if, if the board's interested in EV chargers for this year, I mean, now's the time during the budget process and we could, we could talk about adding, you know, funding and deliberations. So that's why I thought it would be helpful for Andy to come tonight.
Yeah.
I would, I would think it's worth considering now, certainly having the discussion.
Sure.
Well, especially, you know, especially looking at some of the homework, right? How long are these rebates going to be available?
Right.
You know, things of that nature, right? If this is something that is going to come off the board in another year, if, you know, that's good to know now, if you want to take advantage of it.
So I have another question, but
Sure.
It's actually with, with Dan in the room, it's kind of related to it. So as municipality charging stations have been considered to be looked at again, or we may be considering that other towns do it.
Can I ask Dan a question?
No. Okay. I'm just curious about from the business point of view, so.
Well, you're a business and you're a business that is in the business of housing residents?
Mm-hmm.
I'll, all right. Why, why would
I, I went to Dan, because I
Why would you not
Yeah.
Install chargers?
Absolutely.
If I had an EV, if, if I had a, I have an EV, I'm living in, well, you kind of get where I'm going with this. I, I don't mean to
Absolutely.
But, anyway, because, I'll stop talking. But if you, any further questions, please send them to Ryan, those of you who have my personal email. You know, obviously, yeah, I want the town to go forward with this, but I want you to know what it's about and I want you to be comfortable going forward. All right.
So I think more to come.
Yeah. Yep. Thank you everybody.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
Much appreciated. All right. The next item on the agenda is a presentation on Brainerd Place. Dan Bertram is with us this evening, developer of the Brainerd Place project, with a proposed update that I believe is being, working its way through the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Again. So I'm going to have that file open on a computer as well to kind of facilitate hopping around a little bit on, on the slides. So I don't forget it, I think I would like to, I'll start with EVs. So on the, the typical way we would do a building like, say, E in the upper right here, in the parking garage, which has about 125 parking spaces in it that are underground, we would have four charging spaces, right, and alpha of two chargers. And we have similar incentive programs that we've reviewed for the project. So each, each apartment building, we plan to do that. We're still evaluating the commercial lot, and I can probably point that out when I go to the proposed new plan. So to start tonight, we're just basically have up the plan that was the most recently We have the Sage Building, which is C, the Starbucks Building, which is D, H, which is Hart Jarvis, G is Brainerd, E is the first building being built now, and F has a foundation going in. The topic of tonight's discussion really has to do with momentum and maintaining that for the rest of the project. So when we look at the existing site plan, there was a pharmacy out on the corner of Main and Marlboro in the, which is the B Building, and then a large commercial building on A. And we have found that to be very difficult to lease and certainly pre-lease enough to finance, and so we have effectively come back to say that to maintain the momentum that we have currently on the project, we have a proposal to optimize all the input we've gotten from various commercial leasing interactions we've had for a few years, and just kind of match it to the site and what the opportunities are. So if we go to the next slide. Actually, up, there we go. So this one is Slide One, and that's Slide Two. Good. Okay. Slide Two here shows a revised A Building, which is similar to F in that it has commercial built into it. It's flipped and optimized for a rooftop amenity on the top floor, which is in the south, I don't want to walk too far from the, from the mic for the streaming audience, I guess. So the southwest portion of the A Building is actually a rooftop restaurant looking back towards the Aragoni Bridge. And you'll see a couple of notes on this. What was 11 residential units would now be 119 residential units in that building. What was around $70,000 is now $19,000 plus what we've put in the B Building, which is another 20,000 square feet more of commercial out on the corner of Main and Marlboro than was originally planned. So we'd like to show kind of how we would be delivering that space, so we'll go to Slide Three now. Guys? Yep. All right. So this is what you would see coming over the Aragoni Bridge and coming to the site and seeing the first commercial building out at the intersection. So this is a view on a revised B Building. The section of the, of the structure that you see there is 16,000 square feet, basically 8,000 on the ground level for retail and another 8,000 above on office. As we come around the corner to the next slide, this is a view as you start to round, coming off of Main onto Marlboro. What you see in the center between the two buildings is a vestibule to come into, and we'll show another perspective shot on that in a second, but you would go up an elevator and be able to go right or left to the office portions of that structure. So if we go to the next slide, this is now having come around onto Marlboro, looking back towards Main Street, what you would see from the second building. So this is B Two, and the first one that you come to from the bridge is B One. And then the next slide shows what looks, what that whole thing looks like from inside the site, looking back at it. And so what we can do is sort of go back and forth a little bit. I'll, I'll show you the A Building next, and then we'll go back and kind of explain the site plan again. But this is if we're visualizing the parking lot, you're really in the center of the parking lot, looking towards the corner of Main and Marlboro. So what the intention here is, is to basically create more premium space for the town, and that is something that we feel that this type of space and use is a big step up from a CVS, especially with the Walgreens on the other corner. And I, as I have said in the past, when I came to this job in 2015, CVS was already supposedly in it, but they really, it, it just didn't progress to anything. And I don't think it's a loss. I think this is a very nice alternative, and it is a, I think, a rightsizing to the existing demand, but a premium offering. And so we are functionally upgrading and now taking the upgrade concept up another level. If you go to the next slide, this gives you a sense for what the rooftop restaurant on the top of A Building would look like. Okay? And so you have a portion of that structure that is indoor dining. You would go up an elevator to a receiving area into a restaurant. You have all the back of house, and then you also have the, the outdoor patio looking out over the Aragoni Bridge. And so we, we think the, the views from this location are phenomenal, and, and so this is a, this is an expensive amenity, but something that we think would be very special and noteworthy about the project. So if we go to the next slide, guys, we'll kind of see, this is the elevation of that building, and you'll see in some of the siding colors where we've shown to make more intuitive where you would enter. You would enter down that, on the ground level. The ground level, yes, thank you for the pointer there. You go in, get on an elevator, go up to the fourth floor, and come out to the restaurant. And that has its, that's a dedicated elevator for that functionality. So then you would work your way to the right to have, have that experience. We'll go to the next slide. This is the building as you come around the corner towards, this, this is actually, on the left side of this face is looking north, and if you look on that grade level, there's about 9,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground level. So as you come into the site, you're not looking into directly apartments, you're, you're looking at a commercial level, apartments start above. And if we go to the next site, the next one, this is just a final shot that gives you a sense, in the same type of rendering methodology, this is the A Building in the foreground and the already approved F Building behind it. A little ghosted there in the background. So I think we'll go, we'll go forward one more slide. Oh, okay. Sorry. I thought there was
There is some right there.
Yeah, so, okay, that was the one I was looking for, the one with the yellow. This slide right here takes and shades any portion of any building to show the commercial in that structure. And so the idea here is to give you a sense for when you're in the middle of the parking lot, looking around, you're very much in a commercial, mixed-use project. The verticality of it, right, because all of these things are either on the ground level, right, in B One, B Two, and then the level above, because it's a two-story commercial building, as is Sage, as is Hart Jarvis, right? Brainerd, of course, is, is as well, I suppose. Starbucks, that skinny D Building, is only one level, but everybody kind of can go by the site and see that today because that's all framed. And then it's on the grade level, which is the portion of the foundation for F that's being poured right now. So that, that top of that garage ceiling is shaded in yellow. Then I think that, that kind of gives you, that gives you the sense for the visualization. If we can go back now to Slide Two. This is probably the one to kind of take questions from because it, it gives you the sense for what we intend to do, when and how these things interact. I will say that as it relates to the commercial portion for the EV charging discussion, the logical place on this site, we believe to be Right, in this section. And one of the things that goes into it, when programming in a commercial lot, is while your car is in the spot, you know, what can you go and enjoy, right? And so we would say that you can walk up to the Starbucks and hang out there. We hope to have a, another restaurant-type thing next to Starbucks in that same building, this rooftop restaurant in A for maybe later in the day, right? So we'll be exploring how much of a charging location is relevant and feasible at that location on the site. But we're, we're definitely kindred spirits. I, my family, I actually totaled the Model S early, and it's auto driver, which people give me a lot of hard time about. And so I was banned from driving that for, by my family for a while. But it is amazing technology, it is a shift that is, you know, happening in the world, and so we will certainly be supporting it in and through the whole development. So with that, I would say that's a decent summary, I think, probably, of what the changes to the development plan are. And if I went into some of the things that we have been kind of negotiating with the board as it relates to insurances that the project gets built out, there's also in the packet, an agreement that shows the, some of the things that need to be done for the tax incentive to apply to the individual buildings. So in the end of the agreement, it has dates per building. It also has certain things that, for, say, F to get COs, then we need to have the exteriors of the three historic buildings completed so that when you're driving by the site, you don't see the boarded-up windows and all the things. We're very focused on that right now. And you'll see that we started doing work on the Brainerd Building. And if you look up at the eaves around the edges of the roof, that's, that's been demoed so that we could do structural repair work. And that, that will progress from the Brainerd House to Hart Jarvis and, and conclude with the Sage House. So that's in motion, but one thing that's incorporated into this deal is that F Building can't get COs until the exteriors of those three are together. And so I think that'll really be great for curb appeal and just all the things that, that go with that. that go with that. On the similar thing for Building A, there's a provision for the Building B to be completed. So Building A cannot get a CO without B up, and that's both portions, B1 and B2. And so that, I think, is another thing to make sure that this stays a balanced job between its residential and commercial components. So I would like to address, before I forget to touch on it, the school question. And so that was, I was able to look up the data that we had pulled from a project in Brookfield, Connecticut, that had the same unit mix as this. So it was a 70% studios and one bedrooms and 30% two bedrooms. And in 149 units in a town with a desirable school system, as, as is Portland's, there were 10 school-aged children. And so that was like a 6% type of metric. And so if you took that and you applied it to the development plan of 348 units, which is what this would extend out to, that would be around 24 kids and school-aged children by just extending that across. The unit mix is to be maintained in the new units as were in E and F originally. So the programming for the job itself, there are no playgrounds. It's, it's not designed for children. We would have more large units if it was a, more of a family offering. It's, it's more the, the recent college grad and the, and the senior crowd. And I think that to that end, we had done an analysis on that same other property, and I think 27% of the units were 55 and older, right? And so that was another interesting metric. No actual age restrictions, but just who chose to live there. And so in terms of the amenity program, yes, we do have a pool between E and the Brainerd House, and in the Brainerd House, we'll have amenities like a pool table and shuffleboard, but, you know, not daycare, right? That's not, not in the intended demographic we're going after. So with that, I think, I think those are the, those are the highlights, and certainly I can answer any questions.
So the, the Building A that's going to become, you know, more mixed-use, right? There's going to be a little more residential than the original Building A. How many apartments are we looking at?
Yeah, so 119, where there were 11 before.
11 before.
So it's a net increase of 108.
Net of 108, okay.
Yep.
And what's the square footage of the restaurant? I know the first floor wrap is 9,000 square feet of commercial.
Right, right.
What is the square footage of the restaurant?
It's nine and change also, because the total of the first floor and above is 19,283.
19,283, okay.
And that same building, and those additional housing units you just spoke of, do you know what the mix is of one to two bedroom in that building?
It's, it's that same, 70% are studios or in ones, and 30 is twos. So we maintain that, and that's, that is a restriction both in the zoning regs and in the, and in the agreement, the, the...
I think it's just important to note that this has not been approved by planning and zoning, this modification, so it's...
No, 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 that's absolutely the case. We're, you know, we're...
And I, just for people who might be in the audience that, you know, just want to be clear, there, there is a process that is, is being followed. But, you know, where this board and this body comes into play is with the fixed tax agreement, which is what Dan is, is referring to. And so there, this, we had an agreement in 2017, then an amendment to that agreement in 2021, and then another amendment in 2022. So we're talking about a third amendment, which is really the fourth, but yeah, just so everyone's aware.
Sure. And, and our process on this type of thing is to say, we have a, a market condition, like if we go back to slide one, guys, we have a market condition and the existing approval that has us able to finish the C building, all the, all the buildings along Marlboro Street, C, D, H, G, E, and then back to F. And without some modification to the plan, we're concerned that both B and A will, will sit undeveloped, right? We have the ability to finish the top buildings, the northeast portions of the job, and just continue and keep going. And we're trying to, we're, we're here before the executive board to say, this is what we believe maintains the momentum and finishes the job in one continuous mobilization, and we will, of course, make this same case to the zoning commission later this month.
Do you want to go over the individual buildings and the proposed, and the...
Sure, sure.
And the dates for completion?
Sure.
Maybe while we're talking to that, is there any way you guys could, just for folks looking, if you could zoom this up just a little bit? Maybe they could see a little better what the letters are associated with.
Yeah, should we go to, we'd probably go to slide two, because that, yeah, there we go. So that's the new one, and so we could zoom in on that.
Yeah, Dan, one more quick one, because I just can't read it. What's the commercial space in the Building A, the current configuration, not the proposed?
71. Yeah, 71, 581 is the, the total, the gross commercial, and then 11 residential.
What's the gross commercial in the proposed, Dan? So everyone knows.
19,000, 283.
No, I meant, I mean for the entire project.
Oh, oh, we're just over 83,000 of gross commercial in this plan here. So if we, you'd like to go over the dates?
Yeah, just so...
Yeah, sure, sure.
To talk about.
Sure.
That was one of the things.
So what we did is made a schedule for Buildings A through H, and I guess going down, well, why don't we do it this way? I'll do the buildings that are first to be completed that have an outside date of March 14th, 2026. That would be Building D, Building E, and G. So that is the Starbucks building, the Brainerd House, and the first apartment building that is under construction now. And we, of course, expect to do better than those dates, but we just have to kind of build in time for, you know, things that, that apply probably most to the later buildings, because we do expect that Building E will be able to open floor by floor, starting at the top and working our way down, starting midsummer this, this, you know, coming shortly. And, and as I mentioned to someone earlier, this wing of the top floor of that building is being sheet rocked and taped as we speak, I mean, from my site visit today, so it's moving along.
Pricing will be announced in April still?
Yes. Yep, yep, by the end of April, closer to the end of April, versus April 1st. But yes, that's, that's the schedule. Then the next round of dates is the same March 14th date, but in 2027, and that would be Buildings C, F, and H. So that's Hart Jarvis, Sage, and the F Building, right, the second apartment building. Then for B would be March 14th of 2028, and that is for both portions, B1 and B2, out on Main and Marlboro. And then March 14th of 2029 is Building A.
Do you want to talk about the incentive on the new apartments that, that's built in?
Yes, actually. So in, in talking about what can be done when and approaching the, just in discussions about what, what incentives would be appropriate for different things, the, the word we got and, and we agreed to is that no new apartments, the 108 new total apartments, would receive a tax incentive. It would only be for the commercial portions and the original 11 apartments in Building A that would get the tax abatement. And otherwise, the tax abatement would apply to any building completed within the timeframes specified.
I think it's important to, you know, to bring that, you know, up, because the initial approval from 2017 was 240 apartments, you know, and we did, you know, the current, the current amendment does not deviate from that.
That's correct. Does it have questions?
No more questions?
All right, well, thank you very much.
No, actually, I will, I'm sorry, I will ask. So I think you, you have submitted to planning and zoning?
Yes, we have, yeah.
And I'm going to get, it'll get received in tomorrow? Is that the...
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I guess we submitted last week, and it would be brought into the record, and I think they went to schedule a public hearing. We're, we're hoping for the 21st of this month, but the, the commission will decide tomorrow.
I'm sure it'll be well-attended.
I always look forward to making our case and going from there.
Any other questions for Dan before we... No? All right, well, thank you, Dan.
I'll be here.
So...
Thank you.
So as we discussed, this will be going through planning and zoning, but we do have the agreement, the amended agreement that we discussed in your packets. Now, I do want to go over, as Dan mentioned, the changes. I do want to read what, what we're talking about here in, in this amended agreement. So some of the big changes with this are some of the stipulations that Dan mentioned with building and making sure that the historic homes, for instance, are completed on time. So Section 8.7 of this agreement has the completion of the exterior construction of Buildings C, G, and H, those are the three historic homes, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for Building F, that being the second apartment building. So the second apartment building would not be able to be occupied by tenants until those historic homes are restored, at least on the exterior for that. Section 8.8 has completion of Building B, that is, the Buildings B1 and B2 both, and the interior Building G, which is the Brainerd House, prior to the issuance of a CO for Building A. Also, Section 8.9, commencing October 1st, 2024, BRT shall provide a report to the town on April 1st and October 1st in each year of the agreement, which report shall provide an update and status report on the estimated timeline for the completion of Buildings A, C, G, H, and B, including B1 and B2. If by October 1, 2026, the town determines that the completion of the exterior of Buildings C, G, and H will not occur prior to the completion of Building F, the town may, by majority vote of the Board of Selectment, determine that BRT is in default in the performance of its obligations under this agreement and request that the agreement be renegotiated. I think that is important as well. This agreement will not be applicable to any eligible building not completed on or before March 14th, 2029. I think that's important to note. The residential buildings labeled as Building A, Building E, and Building F in the application shall be constructed to provide for no more than 30% of the units to be two-bedroom and 70% or more of the units to be one-bedroom or efficiency units. And this is what Dan mentioned as well, where it keeps the same ratio that was previously at. So those are the items to note. It's 108 more apartments being proposed. Developer says this plan is actionable. Those apartments that are being proposed would not receive any subsidy from the town with this agreement, which I think is important to note. This board does not determine whether this project will move forward or not. It only dictates the rules of a fixed assessment agreement. The rest would be up to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval if they feel that this project, you know, meets the necessary merits. Did I miss anything?
No, I think we covered it all.
No, I think it's covered.
Yes. So I guess we'll open up to discussion, you know, see where everyone is at on this.
So I'll, I'll start. I've been following this project, as we all have, over the years, and the various permeations of it, but I do really like the newest version. I think it, it does balance out the needs of the town as well as the needs of the builder, which we have to consider as well. It's got to be profitable, but it's got to work for the town, so. So I like the design. I like the setup, and I think the agreement that we have with the modifications we talked about certainly satisfied what I'm looking for in here, and I think it's something that we should consider going forward.
I'll let go, I'll let go Mike's statements about moving forward with this. I also, I, in watching the news recently, especially with large CVS-type buildings that seem to be moving in and then moving out, I do like the new proposed Building B on the bend in the road. I would, it seems to me that smaller commercial spaces are much easier to fill and keep filled. And when people come across the bridge, that's, that's the Portland they see immediately. And I think it's important that the buildings not only look professional and fit the, the nature and the charm of our town, but I think they also have to be able to please the retailer that's in there, but also stay active and busy. So I, I, I like the proposal.
Yeah, I tend to, the new Building B, I think, will be a nicer gateway coming over the bridge than what we currently, than what, what currently was contemplated with the CVS. I think the, when I do the, you know, the calculations, which I always like to do, it looks like, you know, we're going to get about 108 more apartments. It will reduce the commercial, the original anticipated commercial space by 30,000 square feet. But the trade-off there is that that, with that swap, is that those incremental apartments aren't being subsidized, which I think is very appropriate. We're not getting all of the commercial that's, that we were originally looking at, but we're also not subsidizing that change, and I think that's important for the taxpayers to know. The new Building B we're looking at is 32,000, just over 32,000 square feet. I think having the commercial sit more towards the exterior is, is going to give it better visibility and actually will make that more valuable as well, so. The only, the only question, and it's the same, you know, question from last time, is just making sure on the timing, because this agreement is sitting in front of the approval, right, this discussion is in front of the approval, and planning and zoning hasn't actually seen it yet, so I'm just not sure, you know, that's, that's the big question I have, is what's the timing for approving this? Should we make sure that planning and zoning has seen it first? Should this be approved with a trigger for approval? Is there, what's the right mechanism to be respective, you know, respectful that that body still has their work to do?
As far as that question goes, I think this board could, could take action. We could, we can take action independently from planning and zoning. They, they have their own decision to make, and, and that's, that's something that, you know, that board, you know, that commission will do. But, you know, as far as, as far as the, the tax agreement with this goes, I see them as two, two separate issues, you know? The reason why we had to amend the agreement in the first place was because planning and zoning has already approved a change initially from what was a two-phase project to a three-phase project. That's really where the discussions with, with Dan came up, was, was this is the, the agreement before us now, is this is the first amended agreement that incorporates a, a three-phase project as opposed to the two-phase. So planning and zoning has already approved that change, and now there is a... So Planning and Zoning has already approved that change, and now there is another change before them, but we did not take action after the last time that they made a change. So, you know, I don't think there's an issue with us taking an action now on this, you know, they're independent.
Yeah, Ryan, I kind of agree with Jim on this, is if it goes to Planning and Zoning and they don't approve certain changes, then this abatement won't meet this plan.
At the same time, it's kind of a chicken or egg, because right now, the plan as is, is no good. I mean, they've already approved a, Planning and Zoning has already approved a three-phase project, and the agreement that we have currently in place is a two-phase project.
Yeah.
So the fixed tax agreement that we have in place is no good today. You know what I mean?
But if we put this in place and vote on it, and then it goes to Planning and Zoning, and they don't approve the apartment ratio change, then this is null and void again.
Just like the last time. So, yeah, then we'd have to go back and do it again.
So wouldn't it make more sense to have them approve it and then we vote on this to approve this? Because if they change something, then we can change this and vote on it.
I see what you're saying, because it might not be a, it might not be a total rule-out 100%. They might just
Yeah.
Take one part of it and change it, and then we can go back, look at what that was, and adapt this. So we're doing this one time instead of coming back, approving this, goes to Planning and Zoning, they make a change, we come back, make a change, it goes back and forth with Dan's people and us, and then we have to, I mean.
Because Planning and Zoning has the final say
Right.
And how it's going to be made up. So if they change something at their meeting, let's wait until they make any changes, and whatever they approve is final.
Just one thing on that. I get two separate bodies, they have to make their decision. I think there's some value in also, I guess, sending a message if we wanted to today, to say that we like the plan, we feel comfortable about it. It sends a message to them as well that we support it as it is, but they still have to decide. So that's kind of the decision tree for me right here.
Yeah, but our approval of it should have nothing to do with them approving it.
No, I understand.
Just a clarifying question. The plan that was just presented to P and Z that they're going to review is the change to building A with the rooftop restaurant, and they revised the change for the new commercial building B on the bend in the road. Those revisions are being reviewed now by Planning and Zoning, correct?
At their next meeting.
And a couple of the things that you read, Ryan, the section 8.7, 8.8, 8.9, and section 12, some of those reference building B and building A,
Correct.
Which are the new building B and A that they presumably have not approved yet.
That is true.
You know, and the biggest part is the apartments.
Yeah.
If they don't approve the ratio to change, then there won't be 111 new apartments in that building.
I mean, the only thing that you could do is, if you wanted, you could approve it contingent on Planning and Zoning's approval.
That was just what I was going to propose.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was, a trigger.
If you want the P and Z just to have an understanding that we like this plan, we could, if we put it forward in that manner, then they understand where we stand on this thing, that it doesn't tell them that they can't make changes, but then if they accept it and they don't make any changes, then we don't have to worry about it coming before us.
No, I think, even though they're two separate things, there's too much in here that incorporates what they're looking at. If it was one building and we didn't have, the biggest drawback we have, we all know what it is, it's the apartments, right? We know that's going to be an issue. So I love this. I think it's the best plan he brought forth to us, but I don't think that we should approve something that, like Ryan said, we're actually approving something that wasn't approved at the last event, at last time it went through Planning and Zoning. And I think if we approve this and then we have a change, we're going back, we're doing the paperwork all over again, we're having meetings. I'd rather just have, vote on something that I know is the last thing we're voting on after Planning and Zoning looks at. I like this agreement, I think this agreement's great, but who knows in two weeks if this is all going to be accepted? And then we're going back again. That's just my opinion.
The only benefit, as I said, to doing an acceptance conditionally is that then Planning and Zoning would have an understanding of where we stand with it, what we think of it. But, you know, the fact remains, I don't disagree with you, Sean. I mean, if you follow the logical process, it's just this has been dragging on for a while, and I think we're all just trying to find ways to move it along. But if this were the standard process, it goes to P and Z and then us, so I don't disagree with you.
I agree with Sean. It's just that, like, I want to see what Planning and Zoning says first before we put this in front of us, but are you guys worried about letting them know how we feel? I think we're all on public record stating right now that we are in favor of this particular agreement. We don't have to vote on it, but we are on record saying it. So I think that's proof enough for them that if they move forward, that we all are supporting this agreement. Again, like Sean said, I would like to, I'd like to see them approve it before we make our decision. I don't want to go back again either. Like, we want to do it once, do it right, do it once.
Let me ask a question. Is anyone, is anyone on the board not in favor of the amended, the third amended agreement that we're talking about that's before us?
I think it's good.
No, I'm comfortable.
So the concern is voting on something, which I think, you know, is valid, and then Planning and Zoning modifying that, and then us, again, this coming back to us again?
Yes.
And as I said, some of the amendments that you referenced, we agreed to the amendments, but P and Z hasn't even ruled on those amendments yet, on the buildings associated with those amendments.
I don't, I don't think anybody's opposed to this. I think it's just, I think that's the best way to do it, is let it go through them, and hopefully it comes back and we just approve it. And then we don't have to do anything else as far as this concerns us.
Well, we've been talking about this for a long time.
Oh, I know.
If everybody's okay with that, that's, well, that's what we'll do, is that, that's...
When's the Planning and Zoning meeting, next one? When are they?
Well, they're accepting it tomorrow at 7:00, and then it'll most likely be on the 21st, and then, you know, it would be the first time that they have a public hearing on it.
Yes.
The 21st?
21st.
That we would be on the 3rd, would be our next meeting.
I should have invited Dan here, Dan Barrier, planner, tonight, but that would have been helpful.
So if everything goes through Planning and Zoning, we're looking at our April 3rd meeting for approval of this. It looks like, I guess we hold a special, but April 3rd.
The only thing I'll say, and I guess we might want to ask, Dan, do you want to just come up and, my only question to Dan would be on the financing for Phase 2 and how this impacts the, you know, just the timing of everything. This doesn't, I guess, hold you up, I guess, is my question.
Well, it does. So the typical process, just, this is something that we do regularly, is you come to the executive board of a municipality and craft an economic incentive to then invest in all of these other processes. So it's very normal for the selectmen or a city council to act long before the other boards act. And so it's not, we had a project where we were making the decision whether or not to even make an investment in an environmentally impacted site that was going to then need to be invested in and a plan crafted before it could ever get to the other commissions? And so it was full-on a year later before you were even being heard by anybody else, but we only stepped off to invest in it because we knew we were in alignment with the town overall and its executive capacity to give a tax incentive. So from that perspective, I would say that the amendment that is before the zoning commission purely revolves around A and B, and in those 8.8, 8.9 types of things, we have more controls coming in, in the tax agreement, because one of them just relates to the three historic buildings and the exterior shelves being done before F can open. Securing that piece and having F be actionable is the answer to your question, Ryan, as it relates to how does this lingering for another month or two potentially impact the job at F? It does have that ripple effect. The fact that A and B, if not approved as a modification, then, you know, by the zoning commission, we would still need the rest of the agreement, and the rest of the agreement does apply nicely to those other, I mean, we'd have to show the plan again, but all those are untouched, right? Because it is just an A and B proposal. If we were to withdraw or be denied, we wouldn't lose where we are with the three-phase plan that is the law of the land that kind of, so let me condense it, I guess. It has a potential to impact building F, the head of steam on that. That's a specific answer. But I understand the comments, and I do this all day long, and so I'm sitting there, I'm just, you know, kind of seeing how other municipalities process it. I completely understand what you're saying, which is, it's hard to be changing all the time, but that almost, like, if you look at the subtle differences even on the D building, right? With the, between Plan 1 and Plan 2, even from tonight's thing, Starbucks keeps tweaking everything, it drives you bonkers, but it's generally correct. And so the rest of the development side, the development plan outside of A and B, yeah, it would not be a waste of time to approve it tonight, I guess, is what I'm saying. It would allow us to keep moving and keeping pressure on F because it's already under construction, and of course, the A stuff isn't relevant, there's no benefit to be had because, you know, the modification doesn't occur. So I didn't mean to speak too long, but I did want to say, it would slow us down a little bit.
Thank you, Dan. So the only thing I'll say to that is if, just, if we were to approve the amendment contingent on, you know, Planning and Zoning's approval, and Planning and Zoning approves it, well, then it doesn't need to come back before us unless they change something. So if they don't change anything, then we'd be done, you know? So if we do that vote tonight, we could be done, or we're guaranteeing that this will come up again. So I guess that's really the...
I just, I do want to say one last thing. It's not the end of the world if this doesn't happen tonight. So I don't want to be, I don't want to undo anything, you just said, Ryan. It is helpful for us to keep momentum. We appreciate the gesture and we don't have to, you know, tap dance around anything because F needs to be secured, right, and to keep momentum. But I don't want to overstate it. We have a multi-year relationship with the town, and I got to tell you, when I really need something and when I really prefer something, so it is the time that it stays uncertain that it could delay F's progress, but it's not going to kill the job. I don't mean to say that. I don't want to be dramatic about anything either, right, if that's fair.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate that.
I would appreciate action tonight, of course, and a contingent thing.
All right.
Thank you, as long as you covered it.
All right, so what do we want to do?
We'll just wait till Planning and Zoning.
Wait, I'm going to stand by Planning and Zoning, and it comes out to be like eight business days from their final vote to our vote, so I could read it, eight days.
Wait, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I'll wait.
Okay, fair enough. We will wait on this, and thank you, Dan, for the presentation and for coming tonight. All right, we'll move on to item 11, which is appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments this evening?
I have none.
Yeah, we've got a few for you guys. And it's, I'm going to do, we have four of them, I'm going to do three of them, and I'm going to defer to Jim to do the fourth. Okay, we have Youth Services Advisory Board, an alternate, Victoria Short.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
We have Committee on Solidarity, a full member, Cynthia Tyler.
I'll second.
All those, oh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
We have the Plan of Conservation Development Implementation Committee as a full member, Meg Scotta.
I'll second.
Great, any discussion? Great, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
And we have a full member to the Portland Housing Authority. And I'm going to defer to Jim, and I'm going to abstain from the vote.
Who's the opening, replacing the Housing Authority?
I can't remember the name, it was...
Just, you just stepped down.
Yeah.
Was it Matt? No.
Actually, we have our chairwoman ready.
Who was it to step?
Yeah, come on, if you want.
I didn't want you to roll into that.
Oh, no, I wasn't going to.
Susan Malecki, 15 Gildersley Road. Matt Pegalo has moved out of town, and so we are going to be replacing him.
When did he resign? I was unaware he resigned.
To my knowledge, he had said he was turning his letter in, so it didn't come yet.
I don't know if he's actually resigned, though. That's why I'm asking, because I don't know if there's actually a vacancy on the commission.
Well, he's not living in town, so he's not a...
But that doesn't mean, you have to get a letter, and I'm, typically when someone resigns, I get a notice from the town clerk.
Right, yeah.
I haven't seen, and normally, you know, those always stick out to me. So I don't have the list, the most recent list that Michelle sends out on the boards and commissions. I just, before we appoint somebody, I want to make sure that there's actually a vacancy.
Yeah, our understanding is that a letter had gone, but if it hasn't, but we'll double check and see if it's on the website.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that had been my understanding also. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Maybe we hold off on that one until the next?
I'm just trying to check the list real quick.
Yeah.
I was looking up to see if we could find the latest one from Michelle, but...
That's on Blue too.
Yeah.
Must be, they're calling it something different.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
We're not trying to block it.
No, I'm not, yeah, no, I don't even know who you're nominating. I'm just, I just don't know if there's an actual vacancy officially.
No, no, well, we always want to make sure we do these.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I mean, it's easy, we do have this happen when people do move out of town, and even though they move out of town, it doesn't automatically trigger anything, we still need to receive a letter from them. And sometimes we have to chase people down to do that, and, but we do, we always get a letter, and the town clerk makes sure that...
Any luck?
Any luck?
No. I did have one, but I don't think I, oh, let's just one here. This November 7th.
Yeah, I think it was after that.
Yeah, it was after that.
Ralph.
This is from 12, 21.
Oh, you got it. 12, 21? Okay.
He's not listed.
He's not. He's still listed as of 12, 21. Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
He's still on there, Ralph?
As of 12, 21.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, cause I've got the November 1, he's on there November.
Yeah, can it, can it wait till next meeting or?
Yeah, it, it can wait. We were just trying to, trying to get another member for the authority, but, um, certainly we want to make sure we're dotting the i's, crossing the t's.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, we just want to make sure that.
No, no, no worries.
Okay. Any other appointments?
That's it.
Okay. We'll move on to refunds of excess payments.
Um, motion for refund of excess payment for Loretta A. and Michael R. Foley, eighty six dollars and sixteen cents.
Second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Global Seventeen LLC, five hundred and forty dollars.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Benjamin Ritchie, one hundred ninety six dollars, seventy six cents.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Brian J. Croto, one hundred and seventeen dollars, eighty six cents.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Thomas W. and Leslie Gilbert, six dollars.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Helga Romanek, ninety nine dollars, eighty two cents.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Susan K. Glover, three dollars, sixty two cents.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment for Ernest R. Lemay Jr., sixteen dollars, eighty eight cents.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment for June C. Martin, three hundred and seventy two dollars, twenty three cents.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment for Andrea R. Farrington, sixteen dollars, twenty three cents.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Refund of excess payment, Jarrett and Tiffany Osborne, three thousand, sixty two dollars, fifty one cents.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Uh, refund of excess payment, Ryan, sixteen dollars, thirty cents.
Second. For discussion, I will say that Ryan is a company out of Arizona. It is no affiliation to myself. So I, we even looked up the company because I'm, it's got to be like Ryan Incorporated or something, but no, it is just Ryan, so.
We're laughing because the amended email came through.
It showed that, yeah.
I told Michelle to make sure, I don't want people thinking that, you know, getting sixteen dollars and thirty cents here. So anyways, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to status reports. All right, just to, a couple of things, just to, just to let, you know, the board and the audience know that budget season is here. I did submit my budget March 1st. That is available on the town website and in the town clerk's office. The public hearing on the budget will be held this coming Tuesday here in the Buck Foreman Building at 7:00 PM. And Dr. Britton will be here as well to present the Board of Education budget. And then the following day, on Wednesday, uh, we will be here for the, our first budget workshop on the budget. And so the budget process has begun. The table, the timetable of all the budget workshops and deliberations are on the website at PortlandCT.org. And, uh, so looking forward to working with this board throughout the budget process. And, uh, just a couple other things to touch on. We did receive the report, I don't know, Jim, do you want to talk about the GZA report to Water and Sewer Meet? But, um, we're still working on looking for funding for the next phase of our water project. So I think it's just important to, uh, it's estimated that the well and permitting, which is the next phase of the project, is estimated to cost 1.5 to $2 million. And so Public Works Director Ryan O'Halloran and myself are exploring various funding, potential funding options. And so I just want to keep you, you all aware that we are looking to, to move forward on this well, hopefully by sometime in late summer, if, if feasible, if funding allows. And, um, so we're, we're looking, we're looking elsewhere right now. Uh, so more to come on that, but I just thought it would be important to mention. Um, I also want to let you all know that our Main Street sidewalk project is going out to bid, uh, if not this week, next week. So the sidewalks on Main Street will be coming, uh, this spring. We're excited later this spring or early summer. So we're pretty excited to get that going. It's going to start at Arvid Road and work its way, uh, north to, I want to say about 510 Main Street right now. Uh, we are optimistic. We do have a, a grant that is still, it is still in play. And so if we were to receive that grant, we would be able to continue on. So fingers crossed on that. Hopefully we'll, uh, you know, we'll get positive news on that. The, I did post about it, the Russell Avenue Water Main Replacement and Road Reconstruction pro, uh, project is ongoing now. The Co-Avenue Pump Station Project is staging and they're getting ready to go soon. So it's great to see those two longtime projects moving forward. And I think that's all I have this evening.
I have, uh, Board of Education. I attended the meeting last night and I want to thank Tricia Dean, who took the minutes because I took notes and the minutes came out today and thank God they did because my, my notes weren't that good. Uh, I'll just go, go through, it was, as usual, was a very packed meeting. Um, couple highlights, um, they had the Portland Public Schools Spotlight and last night they talked about the Kid Governor Program. And we had a presentation from Portland's Kid Governor, uh, Roman Christensen. He did a really great job and personally, I think we wish him a lot of luck. This goes to the state level now and he competes for state kid governor. Um, we had the student representative reports and there's two young, uh, students from Portland High School that are there every week and they do a great job. Um, they talked about the Portland Musical Tickets are now on sale for March 22nd and March 23rd. Uh, the seniors are hosting Adams Roundup Fundraiser on March 30th. Uh, the softball auction is, will be hosted on March 28th. They have so much going on, these kids are amazing. Freshmen hosting abatement tournament on March 7th. That's tomorrow. Um, Dr. Britton reported, uh, there were, the resignation, he accepted the resignation of Stacy Benham, uh, and we, everybody gave a round of applause for her and we wish her well. Um, they also noted receiving a resignation from a science teacher at the high school. Um, and the, Dr. Britton reported that he and the team will be meeting with DAS to go over the grant application for the school project. They want to hit the ground running and make sure that, uh, everybody knows that we're trying to dot every t and cross every i, or vice versa, dot every i and cross every t. The Director of Curriculum Instruction Technology gave a report about, um, the Educator Diversity Plan that's required by state law and that's an effort to try to get, you know, get some diversity in the hiring of your teachers. Uh, and then he spoke to, um, some new course proposals that were later in the meeting voted on and, uh, accepted. And, um, they are, uh, a English 12 course adjustment. Uh, they will now, it'll be a half year course, but it's really going to be directed at writing towards graduation in college and beyond, which I think is great. Um, they have a new elective for reading, uh, that just came from the kids and they wanted a course that got, where they got to read mystery and mayhem topics. Um, and that was accepted as well. Um, a contemporary issues through multimedia course, uh, which is, you know, really looking at all the multimedia that, that kids are exposed to and really trying to look at it with a, a very careful eye to determine what's real information versus what isn't. Um, and a, um, Essentials of Math Path, Pathway Course, uh, to talk about Algebra I Essentials, Geometry Essentials and Algebra II Essentials, really directed at kids who are struggling with the traditional math courses and trying to help them through it. Um, and that's about it. Thank you, Ken.
Okay. Any other status update reports?
Um, Long Range Capital's wrapped up now. We're in budget season and planning and zoning, uh, is going to be busy for the next few meetings. Um, Aragoni Winery, Brainerd Place, um, the gas station on 66, the spot, Corey View, um, and their next meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock.
Yeah, a lot of economics development going on, huh?
Yes.
What about the Building and Usage Committee that you're on, Sean?
The first meeting went very well. Um, we pretty much put together some ideas, uh, personal ideas, what we thought would benefit the town, um, with the two buildings. We are doing a walkthrough with Gildersleeve and the Brownstone Intermediate School on Saturday morning at 9:00 o'clock. And then we have a meeting, um, next Monday, I believe, is our next meeting. And then we'll discuss what we've, trying to look at the buildings. We got the, uh, sight lines reports, so everybody was able to look at that and, uh, just try to get some sort of direction going forward.
So those site visits on Saturday are open to the public. Uh, we're meeting at 9:00 AM at Gildersleeve and then I think taking a trip down to look at Brownstone Intermediate School as well. So, uh, thank you, Sean. Yeah, I thought it was a good first meeting of that committee, uh, so thank you for serving on it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any, anything else? First as? All right, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone in the audience? State your name and address, please.
Spencer, 139 West Cotton Hill Road. Hi, haven't seen you guys in a long time. Ryan, I think you're doing an excellent job, um, but I had one thing, when I brought up point of order, it says discussion and possible action. It doesn't say board discussion. So I was under the assumption the discussion would include anybody on that side of the tape. So that was why I spoke up. When I did.
It's, that's public, unless it specifically says.
I thought we were having a discussion. It says discussion. I was ready, I was ready to discuss. Um, and I did show up for, for, uh, Dan's project, but yeah. Where's the well going? The one you want to drill for a million five? I'm just curious. Or did, or did you not settle on a site?
No, the red complex is where the town will prepare.
All right. Um, and I'm glad you guys tabled the abatement tonight. Um, it wasn't just a simple, um, application to change things. I believe there's going to be some regulation changes. If I read the regulations correctly, that this doesn't meet our current regulations, so we'd actually have to change our zoning book to allow this. Uh, regulations right now, and it was a big deal. I don't know if I was involved in all that back then and I'm sure you guys remember it. Um, the town basically, and the zoning board concluded no more than 240 units on that site, period. Um, I believe they used the phrase under no circumstance, is the exact phrase in our zoning book, to exceed 240 residential units. So it's not like we're just sitting here talking about a simple tax abatement. I can get behind it. I'll be the first guy to admit, I want this project to succeed. It's underway. It's got to look great. I'm glad they are presenting things that do look good, but there's going to be some hurdles along the way. It's not as simple as, um, it's just a modification. And I felt like a couple of you thought maybe this was just a zoning modification. It's, that's not how I see it. I see there's going to be some regulation changes. If I see the ratio the way it's written now, even in the word preservation, so it was well written and I think you guys, uh, I think Dan's team actually wrote the original phrase where they use the word preservation. Um, so I don't believe they need to restore any of the buildings, but that's just one example of if they beautify the outside and not the inside to get their CO, I don't see the incentive. These are all zoning things, so I don't need to get into it, but, um, I would like to see if that's going to be the case. It says preservation and I would argue, and Dan would argue, throwing windows and a roof on it and preserving the outside is a form of preservation. So thank you for going that far, but we'd like to see them finished and used and, um, I'd like to see more teeth and that's going to be more of a zoning issue in my opinion, so I don't need to go into that. But there's going to be quite a few things, um, that we have to go through. And like our current regular, the regs, I think would put you somewhere around 110,000, uh, if we went by the current. So I'm assuming you're changing the regs, uh, for the ratios for commercial versus, uh, residential. So even if we were allowed to have more than 240, which I don't believe we're allowed to according to the regs, uh, you'd still have to have 109 and change for, um, commercial and I believe you said it's in the 83 range, so that's obviously different than what our regs allow. These are big changes. So I think you made the right decision, so I wanted to come up here and, uh, I wish I had the opportunity in the middle to, and I could have probably pointed out, just a regulation and probably got away with it, but, um, uh, I'm glad you guys tabled it. So, um, what else do I have up here? Let's see. So I think that's about it for now, but thank you for tabling it. You're going to see it's a, it's a big decision. Planning and zoning has a big choice whether they're going to change our rules to allow this. And I think there is some benefit to working with the developer, but, uh, keep in mind, that's a lot of residential. So if he's adding another, was it 108, 111, somewhere in that range, 108? Um, and I believe the original was 238?
240.
240 even? Well, I went for the max. I thought it was for, for 238. Um, I believe, what does Portland have for residential units? Forty, what do we have, Ryan? Do you know this offhand?
I don't know if the question is.
I thought it was 4,400 units, give or take, residential units in the town. You, you're knocking on big ratios here. This development could hit 8% give or take. Yeah, these are big numbers. We have to really, um, think it out. Two, 240 was a lot. I think a real lot. And keep in mind, this is our, once again, these are more statements for planning and zoning. This is our number one commercial site, in my opinion. Uh, that's what it is. It's zone, it's currently a mixed use, uh, but keep in mind, the only way you get mixed use is if you have a good commercial end of it. Um, and I get, he's revamping it and I, I, I want to work with anybody that's working with the town, but it has to be within reason. We already have a lot of apartments there and these are big choices we have to make as a town, so I'm really glad you, uh, tabled the abatement. And, uh, the last thing I'll add is keep in mind, he's had to change the project along the way, uh, to make it work and I respect that. Uh, and in all fairness, we may have to change our abatement along the way too. Uh, there's no reason it shouldn't be done in a ratio. If you're building less commercial, why should we be giving, why shouldn't we be giving, let me phrase it a different way, less of an abatement? Uh, we, we got on board as a town. We never had this regulation to allow this type of development. We actually created it for, um, I don't want to say, because there's probably different legal entities that it was created for, but Dan Bertram's been here the whole time. This regulation was created while he was here and I think he helped craft it. And, uh, so there has to be give and take and we did. And, uh, and I was one of the ones that originally voted in favor of giving Dan, uh, an abatement based on the ratio at the end and the number of bedrooms. And I like to see that he's still continuing that, that's a plus. But these are all things, if he's going to change the ratio for commercial to residential as a town and as a taxpayer, I'd like us to consider changing the ratio of what the abatement entails. I think that's reasonable. We're not getting what we asked for, and I understand, understand things change, but here's where we are today. So, these are all things that should be discussed. I'm really glad you did not vote on this tonight, I think. And please try to allow public comment during the next, let's, you know...
It's not how it works.
Well, you could make public discussion. Well, actually, it is whatever you put, we could just throw a public comment right at it.
You're at five minutes.
Okay. How about...
Thank you, Walter, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, thanks, bud.
Thanks, bud. Anyone else in the audience wishes to comment at this time? Anyone? All right, anyone online wishing to comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, we will move on to Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. Anyone have anything this evening?
I'd just like to, uh, thank you, Ryan, for getting the new AED put up at the park for us. We were kind of wondering when we were going to see that. And I'm glad it's up before it goes into full swing, and I hope no one ever has to use it down there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Sean.